To worry about the kids being out last night.
Right, let's hope not. I'd like to call to order tonight's school committee meeting, please. For Tuesday, January twenty second, two thousand nineteen. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any comments from the public tonight? Okay, moving on to presentations and discuss issues of interest to the committee. Second quarter budget update. Can we please have Martin join us for the finance update? Thank you. Hi, Martin.
How are you?
Good, thanks, how are you?
From one budget here to another, um, the second quarter is done now, so, um, we have seen an increase in expenses, overall expenses for the school of seven, of a little over seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. But percentage wise, we're at the same level, um, where we were last year, which is at forty-eight percent of budget expended, so we, this is where I expect to see the school at this point of the year. There is nothing, um, extraordinary except, uh, what I pointed out at our previous meeting or the first quarter presentation, it's kept going. The repair and maintenance, uh, for the HVAC systems in the schools have been this year now total over two hundred and ten thousand dollars. There has been a complete, um, inventory down, if, if you say, it, it, so this is not anticipated to be a repetitive expense. This is a one-time, uh, maintenance item that just this year, um, was found to be in need of, uh, some repair, so, and maintenance, um.
Have we budgeted that? Where is that money coming from?
It is coming from, we do have repair and main- maintenance budgets that are substantial, um, so it is coming from them and, uh, some savings in other lines that we are seeing so far, which is, uh, electricity. Um, for instance, at NHS and NES, as you see, as you saw in the FY twenty, we're, uh, reducing these, uh, budgets because the trends are not, uh, are favorable for now, so, um, that's one area from where we might get some of the additional funding needed for these repair and maintenance one-time items. There is a separate contract, uh, for HVAC repair and maintenance, which totals forty-eight thousand dollars a year. That's gonna be moved, that's moved into the budget and that's going forward into the FY twenty budget. Payroll expenses, as you see, they've grown, um, over four hundred thirty-one thousand dollars. These are contractual obligations. There is nothing, um, out of the ordinary there. These are union contracts and, uh, contracts, uh, for employees. They're at thirty-eight percent expanded at this point, as compared to thirty-nine last year. So unless you have questions, I can move to the community school.
Great.
Community school results continue, continue to be very, um, very encouraging. Uh, they're holding steady, the increase in program revenues, uh, in actuality is twenty-three thousand dollars, slightly over, even though it shows as a little over eight thousand, because we have to remember last year we had a four hundred sixty-five thousand dollar in total funding coming from the town. This year we have four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And, um, so same programs that have been, um, holding steady throughout the year have, have carried the community school, drivers at over ten thousand dollars, increase in program revenues, extended day, um, revolver, um, a little over twenty-three thousand dollars, as well as adult literacy programs over five thousand dollars. Um, to offset these increases, some of the other, some other programs have not, um, um, fared as well as last year, one of them being summer camp, and I just had a brief conversation with, uh, with the director of the community school, Tracy Roberts. The ratios changed for, um, for summer camp, so, uh, with the same personnel, you can, could not have the same amount of students enrolled in summer programs, so that's part of the reason why we're seeing that decrease, um, for this year compared to fiscal year eighteen. The other, um, the other revolver, the other revolver that's seen a drop, um, is in total is the swim revolver, um, mainly driven by dolphin's use. This year there has been, uh, less, um, participation than last year and, um, that, that, that's, uh, that's why we're seeing it at this point, but I spoke with, uh, um, swim, uh, director, aquatics, uh, director Jim Pignaro today, and he said that, that he anticipates, uh, more revenue coming in the spring. So, um, while we may not hit our target of thirty-six thousand dollars budget-wise, it will be closer to it than it, than it appears at the current moment with dolphin use. Um, so that's on the community school revenues. The expenses and encumbrances have decreased by over fifty-four thousand dollars, um. Some of it is known, obviously, last year we had budgeted expenses for a two-month rent, um, of the old South Road, um, location, uh, but, and we don't have that this year. The other part is medical insurance, uh, it's, it's showing right now forty thousand dollars less. Several employees who started in the fall, um, have picked up plans, but they, they have only been charged once or twice within this, this quarter, so we anticipate that this gap will close between last year and this year's medical insurance costs. So, um, that's about the, that's the community school. I mean, if you have any questions, um, on the presentation or.
Do you have any questions? Steve, questions for community school, okay.
No.
Commendation maybe? I don't know, how you keep track of all.
Let's let him finish, let's let him finish.
How you keep track of all this?
School lunch program, um, as of the.
I thought he was done.
No, school lunch.
This is the third part. It's, it's Tim's favorite part. He, he's not here tonight, but. Uh, school lunch program is at the end of December, is, um, right now trending at a thirty-five thousand dollar deficit or close by as compared to a little over thirty-eight thousand last year. I've spoken with, uh, with the director of the food service program, Linda Peterson. She's comfortable that we'll stay within the projected sixty-five thousand dollar subsidy or be lower than it, uh, this year, but, um, it's, there's been challenges. There was, um, another, uh, incident with a freezer at the, the NHS, uh, location that needed to be fixed and repaired, and there was some loss of inventory, not to the, to the same amount that happened last year. Last year we had over sixty-five hundred dollars, um, um, food inventory lost, but it, it is raising, uh, question mark whether we need to, um, invest a little more in the, in the, in, in equipment. Now, there is some fund balance available in the school lunch revolving, uh, program, uh, that has accumulated over the years. That, that is, I've checked with the Department of Education, that is eligible to be used for repair and maintenance. So if need be, we could, we could go there, but that depends on, to see how it, how it holds up in the course of this year and the, the next six months of operations. Um, sales in dollars terms have increased over, uh, um, fifty-seven hundred dollars. It's obviously with a new kitchen now, um, and, and the increase in Roman, that's anticipated. Same, same days of operation like last year, seventy-two days. Free and reduced, um, are steadily, uh, are between thirty-eight and forty percent, so they're, they're, they are at forty percent as of the end of December compared to thirty-six percent a year ago.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Questions? Steve?
Commendation.
Sure, but I do have a question before you. Do we keep track of purchases of, of the appliances such as the refrigerator dates and, um?
There is an inventory, yes, obviously. We have an inventory with, with the town on every piece of equipment we own, which, uh, is, um, updated every year. And some of this equipment is, um, at towards the end of its useful life, so, um, it is something that we might look in the future to see whether it can be, um, replaced or it can be maintained.
I think, um, if I may, the, um, we also have used year-end surplus if there is some to offset some of the equipment needs for food services, so we'll be looking at that this year too.
Would some of that qualify as capital improvements, since it's permanent?
Right.
It, it.
Relatively speaking.
And a one-time purchase?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it, that depends, um, on how the capital article is written as to what it's, that might include. Now, if you're talking about the three hundred thousand in the new twenty-twenty capital, yes, it could. Is that what you're thinking about?
I was not thinking of that specific figure. Martin said we'd know more.
Yeah.
Um, you know, at some time in the relative near future, and that's when I wonder if we could address some of that with capital expenditures or requests.
I think we would always look to, um, only go to that reserve, spend down that reserve if we had to. I, I think we'd rather find alternate means.
I was thinking new money more than, than old and reserved. It's been a while since I've messed with the necessary definitions for capital expenditures, but I remember going through that a few years ago in some depth and just something to think about.
Brian, as he pointed out at, at the meeting tonight, is very accurate in saying capital, um, articles give us great flexibility because they can cross fiscal years, meaning we are bound by a fiscal year to expand a certain amount of money, which is our operating budget. Once that fiscal year closes, we no longer can create obligations if we leave anything on the table, meaning unexpended funds. Capital, um, capital articles give us flexibility, they can spend over several years, and if it's a project that crosses fiscal years, it's a shrewd way to go that way with a capital, uh, expenditure, as opposed to operating. But as Mike is pointing out, we've always prioritized, um, at the end of the year, with the end of year funding, as we will going, going into this year's, uh, year-end, usually by March, we know where we are and we start planning, uh, for needs to be addressed.
Thank you, Martin.
Thank you. Any, that's it?
We're good. Thank you.
That's it. I already made my commendation.
All right, moving on to bullying update. Could we have Kim Gubish, please, for NES? Join us.
Hello.
Hello.
We have, uh, no bullying at the elementary school. We have, um, two parents who have, uh, made a request to look into two situations. Through investigations and conversations with multiple sets of parents and students, we've determined that it's not bullying. In the one instance, we, um, had to make a change in classroom, so that stopped it immediately if it was going to grow to bullying, and, um, it didn't, and, um, the other one was, uh, we were supposed to have the parent meeting today. In our investigation, it's not bullying, it's not targeted, it's not repeated. It's kind of two kids back and forth, doing great things together and then not so great things together. So we've met with one set of parents and the other set of parents was scheduled for today, and they were stuck off island. But, um, through the investigation, it doesn't meet the bullying criteria.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, I do. What, where is the line drawn between what is determined as bullying and playfulness and meanness? And I'm, I'm kind of curious, because I, I'm happy to hear you report that, but I'm also thinking of what elementary school children do and how they interact socially and where they are developmentally, so, uh, can you just talk a little bit more about?
So socially and developmentally, there is some of this back and forth, but it's not, it's more about communication often than it is about, um, trying to target or, or make someone a victim. Um, I, I would say that everything we do in a proactive manner, responsive classroom, our social work groups, our, um, SEL classes, lots of the curriculum through second step that is being taught weekly in our, in every classroom, sort of presets or sets the foundation. When it comes to determining if it's bullying, we follow exactly what's on our website, that protocol, and so we do all the investigative work, talking to this, both children, talking to both parents, talking to teachers, looking at behavior across the day in specials, in classrooms, lunch, recess, and really do a pretty thorough investigation. Both Jean Clark and Lisa Hutter are fantastic at doing that work. And then, um, we call it all together and then typically meet with parents as well, and then often they just need to see the, the definition of bullying and understand that it is targeted, that it is repeated. And, and this one that we're in right now is really two kids that like each other very much. And so sometimes they say, I, I'm not gonna be friends with you, and that, that's really what this one is right now. So we're just working through it with parents, but it's, when you're talking about kids up to seven and eight years old, it's not really what you might hear from older kids. We don't have cell phones, we don't, you know.
Right, right, so you're comfortable in, in feeling that all of the programs that you have in place are sort of help to offset and even getting to the point of where it could become bullying?
Absolutely.
You're getting, nipping it in the bud, so to speak?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Steve. Any questions?
Negative.
All right, thank you very much. Eve Marie. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello. So since we met a year ago, um, we have investigated and confirmed two cases of bullying. They were both last school year after January. So I can tell you a little bit about what we do. So we do the investigation as Kim described it, and at the end we felt like there truly was that imbalance of power that's necessary versus when you talk about that back and forth, it's one day you're the aggressor, the next day you are. This is a true imbalance of power, repeated and targeted. Um, so we were sad to learn that that was happening, but grateful that it was reported to us so we can investigate it and, um, look into it. We developed safety, a safety plan for the, what's called a safety plan for the victim or the target, and we create a support plan for the aggressor because they are young and they are learning and we are, they are, it's our primary responsibility to, um, educate them and to grow lagging skills that they may have, um, because they're still so impressionable about how they're impacting others, so I.
Thank you. Any questions?
Are you finding that you're getting the support that you would like from the families as you're going into these investigations?
Yeah, what's nice about, um, having a little bit older children is, um, they call their parents and they let their parents know what, when it's all comes out, um, what they, what's happened and what their role has been, and I find parents are much more engaged and very supportive when their own child is telling them that they were doing these things. Um, and, um, that we've eliminated the, you know, the back and forth that can sometimes happen, um, with regard to, well, my child told me that this other child did these things, like, we've already gone through, we've already looked into everything. We've talked to multiple witnesses. Hopefully we don't have, get too many kids involved, because then it just grows it. Um, staff often have some information, um, so that's been very helpful to have the students call home, and share what their role was, and it really does engage the parents in a, in a really proactive way, and they've been supportive.
Hmm, yeah. Great, thank you. Steve, do you have any questions?
No, she took mine.
I have a question. I am wondering, who actually reports it then? Is it the student reporting to the, the teachers or, um, guidance?
It's a great question. It can be any one of those things. Sometimes students have, um, in a smaller setting, like in a guidance setting, might, um, and plus that's where they're learning about what bullying is, so they might, um, go to a guidance counselor and then they in turn will bring it to my attention and will work together to investigate, or sometimes it's, um, teachers noticing things, noticing behaviors or noticing something off with a student and just, um, because they have that relationship, they're talking to them about what's going on. Um, so, and sometimes the students themselves, uh, not, not, that might not always be the, the way we find out unless they go home and tell a parent that someone's bothering them, then often it's the parent. Usually if someone's, or it seems so far the pattern has been, the student who's the target isn't first to report it
Really?
to the, uh, school adult, to a teach, uh, classroom teacher. They tend to go home and share,
Okay.
which I'm grateful that the parents reach out to us.
And then what is the timeframe once you start the investigation to the time when the students are actually making that phone call, call home to mom or dad?
So it depends. Um, we try, we start immediately because it's a big deal, um, so we, right away, we're gonna start to discern, is this bullying or is this not, and then depending on, um, how many students you have to talk to and if there's a half day thrown in there or a week, you know, it can take a little, just a little bit, but I don't, by and large, I think we are pretty good at trying to get to resolution really quickly, um, because it's a, it's an important matter.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are the results of your investigation and processes thereafter
Mm-hmm.
reported to the parents?
Mm-hmm, yep.
In writing somehow and to support it?
Um, usually verbally when they come in and we, we talk with them.
They do come in.
Mm-hmm, we certainly share with them openly and honestly everything we're doing on our end, and we also try to engage them in some things that we hope and feel that they could do to support their child. For example, recommendation of outside counseling, um, is not uncommon when you have somebody who's struggling with some lagging skills.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're up. Oh, great. Welcome, Fernando. This is nice. Your first presentation, right?
Subject matter was more cheerful. Um, I'm Fernando, uh, Fernando Jones, for anyone not aware, dean of students at the, uh, at CPS. We have three, um, we have three documented incidents of complaints of bullying, um, none of which, uh, we found to be, uh, actually bullying, not because they're not fitting the criteria, um, of actual bullying. Um, that is not to say, um, that we feel, um, that there are some things going on. We suspect it's more so in the cyberspace, um, through Instagram or, uh, Snapchat or wherever social media platform, uh, is popular. Um, what I do like is that students do, uh, they are coming forward, uh, to staff, counselors, teachers, uh, administration, um, when issues do arise, um, so that we have a chance to, um, to address those things, so they don't balloon any further. I don't know if you have any questions.
Polly? No. Hello? Steve?
No, surprised there haven't been more complaints, to tell you the truth, so that's a good thing.
I'm wondering, are you finding peers coming in in support of things that they might see, uh, you know, whether it's on, in cyberspace or the, um, you know, in the halls or in classrooms? Do they come in to support their peers that they notice could be being bullied?
When they know, well, um, students are coming forward when they notice like unkind things happening.
Okay.
They're not saying, I believe this student is being bullied, but if they see something that's happening that's unkind, then they are.
They're bringing it to your attention.
They are, they are bringing it to the attention of, uh, staff, uh, which, like I said before, is, uh, which is actually really great. So we do have the opportunity to, like I said, address those things, which is really nice.
So I know this sounds crazy, but how often are you seeing this? Every day? I mean, how many times a day are you seeing kids approaching staff members about unkind words or behaviors?
If it's, uh, if we're talking about just in those instances, I would say on a weekly basis, without looking at like my numbers or anything, like specifically, I'll probably say, uh, like two or three where it's, where it's those sort of things.
Mm-hmm.
Um, where a student's worried about another student.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Thanks.
Great.
Thank you guys.
All right, Jen, okay.
She's coming out here to sing to us, is that what you say?
Way to turn it around.
Well, I'm happy also to report that we don't have any formal instances of bullying at the high school. Um, there are times when concerns are brought forward and investigated, uh, of the concerns investigated this year. None have resulted in a determination of bullying, which as Eve Marie said, um, requires there to be some type of either real or perceived power differential, and it also needs to be targeted and repeated, um, or have the potential to be repeated. So when concerns are brought forward, oftentimes they're brought forward, um, by students themselves, friends of students, teachers and parents, and then they're brought forward usually to administration or one of our support staff, and then we investigate that concern, any of the people involved. We determine if it's in fact bullying or unkind behavior. Um, even though the kids at the high school have some better skills, we're still, um, about a restorative justice approach in educating kids about what it is their behavior is doing, how it impacts others, so that they're understanding, um, the consequences of their behavior. Then we have a follow-up plan for both students, support plan, plan for the student, um, engaged in the activity, but also for the student who is the recipient of that unkind behavior. We also work with parents to make sure they're informed, because we know parents like to know that their kids are safe and comfortable in school, so we want them to be up to date as to what was, what was done. We're lucky at the high school, we have a big support staff, as you know, our school psychologist, social worker, school counselor, school nurse, school resource officer, all of those people are part of our student support team, which meets every other Tuesday. So concerns are then brought to that table oftentimes, and we discuss the nature of that concern, determines who is going to investigate that concern and what the follow-up will be and by whom. So we're very lucky in that way.
Thank you very much.
Any questions? Polly?
No, I'm, I'm happy to hear that, and I'm also happy to, you know, after the school activities, I don't wanna jinx us, but it's been a long time since we've had any concerns of kids hanging, that I've heard of kids hanging out in school, after school and, and can potentially get into trouble, and, um, so it's, it's nice to know, and I do feel that our school is a safe place during school and after school, so that's comforting. And I think with, you know, we talked about this at the student support meeting, that all of the social emotional programs that are in all of our schools, I think is really paying off, um, to sort of ward some of the behaviors before they get too far, so. Um, and I think with the increase of social workers coming in for the next budget, hopefully, will be another additional support, but thanks, Jen.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Sorry, Steve.
I do, actually, how many?
Sorry, Jen.
Surprise. How many instances have you had to investigate? You said they all turned out negatively, and I'm glad.
Yes, yes, so this, there've been, there are many minor instances that we look into. There have been two this year that we were, that there was a concern that it was bullying. One was regarding cyberbullying. The other was a situation that occurred in a classroom. Um, as I said, our high school kids are more skilled, they're more adept at ignoring behavior. They're, um, better able to communicate with one another, but there's an instant where there was a miscommunication and a lack of understanding about what the intent was, and so it was brought forward, this student or group of students were being unkind. What was the perception, um, of the student that was on the other end of that? The other one was a cyberbullying incident where, um, we determined it wasn't bullying. A student got a picture of another student who was sharing that picture around, and so it wasn't bullying per se. Um, we brought all parties in, educated them about what that means, that it could be considered cyberbullying. If you continue to do this, there could be, um, you know, police ramifications and discussions with the police department if it continues, and it has not, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to committee discussions and votes to be taken.
If I may.
Sure.
I, I would like us to pass over adopting the twenty-twenty budget
Okay.
in hopes that, um, we may get some follow-up news, and it doesn't have to be done tonight.
I like that idea.
I think, um, I've talked to Martin and he's comfortable that we could pass on that tonight.
So you're hopeful that there's.
We can all be hopeful, Steve.
Going to be. Am I hopeful? I am ever.
As I am.
I am ever hopeful.
But asking to pass on it tonight, is there some indication that we may?
I, I haven't received any promises, but I've, um, I'm been allowed to hope, so.
All right.
Yeah, save my speech then.
Thank you.
You'll have another time. It'll show up on another.
Okay.
That sounds good. Thank you, Mike. So, moving on to, um, vote to approve the MOU between Nantucket Community School and Town of Nantucket for rec field use. Are there any questions about this before we vote?
Yeah, I just would like, just to ensure, because it's gone through community school, but I would just like to be comfortable that community school is comfortable with the agreement, and is the town still providing maintenance, um, on a regular basis? Okay, and that's going well.
Great. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, you just pleased Libby very much, and now it'll be that much easier for me to go back to her.
Oh, do it. I have thoughts. I have thoughts.
All right, let's see, vote to approve the donation to Nantucket High School from Cape Cod Savings for Credit to Life Fair in the amount of one thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve donation to Nantucket High School from Island Lumber Company Woodshop Program in the amount of eight hundred and twenty-five dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to, oh, sure, I'm sorry, let's back up.
I don't know if, um, if we've had updates, I know that there was some discussion on the funding for this program, and I'm just wondering where we are with the Washington, we're about to vote on the Washington trip.
Oh, the Washington trip, okay.
Right, isn't that what's coming up next?
That's what's coming up next, yes.
Um.
You have three, three things coming up, so it would be appropriate to ask Peter if you want.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so just, could, how, do, do you have an update on where that's going with the fundraising for families? And do you have an idea of what an average cost is per student and, just like a little bit of information? And the reason I'm asking is because I had, um, heard some concerns of just the expense of the program or the trip. So just, if you could provide an update, that would be terrific.
Sure, yeah, that'd be great, yeah, I think, we haven't really heard much about it, so.
Thank you. Yeah.
This would be great, thank you.
Sorry to do that on the other cuff, but.
That's okay. Um, so the update is the trip to Washington DC is planned for, uh, April, a week after April vacation, April twenty-third to the twenty-sixth, I believe the dates are. Um, and, uh, we have done fundraising since the summer. We started with car washes, we've done a bake sale at the election, um, we had a, a table set up at Stroll to set, to sell, um, greeting cards that the, that the students designed and had printed. Um, we've got, uh, three major fundraisers, um, in process right now. So there's a basket raffle sponsored by the Friends of Nantucket Public Schools, where the funds will go to, uh, Washington trip. That'll probably be the, the most significant one, one event that brings in the most money.
Where's that happening? What's a basket event?
It's basket raffle, so they have like a bunch of baskets with different items in it, themes, and then they'll sell raffle tickets for that.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
Um, we have, um, an event, uh, at, uh, the Chicken Box, um, in the spring, um, where there'll be like silent auction items, things like that. And then a spaghetti dinner in mid-March. Um, and you'll start to see some of those raffle ticket sales take place at Stop and Shop on the weekends over the next few months as well. Um, so every, every dollar earned offsets the cost for all students. So the more we can raise, the lower the cost is for families. Now, some families, the, the, the trip is just cost prohibitive, um, even just to, 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 um, come up with a deposit was, um, a hardship. So there are some, some families that have applied for scholarships and will provide scholarship funding for those families, because we've been able to solicit donations from a variety of different, um, businesses and organizations, you'll start to see them appear here, um, tonight. Um, and that will be to offset the cost for those kids that requested scholarship money.
Who are applying for scholarship.
Uh, of the hundred and thirty, I think we're at a hundred and thirty-five eighth graders now, a hundred and seventeen are going. We were worried it was gonna be a, a lower percentage than that, so that's, that's a class trip, um, which is great, which is our goal. So your other question though about what the final cost will be per student, we don't know yet until, until these fundraising efforts are complete.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but if there were no funds raised, the cost is in the eleven hundred dollar range, which is expensive.
Yeah.
Though for what you get, it's a good deal, but it's still a lot of money for families to come up with. So we're hoping it ends up being more like in the, like four hundred dollar, um, range, three hundred and fifty to four hundred dollar range.
Mm. Mm-hmm. So as far as you know to date, you, you don't have any students that have said they're not going because of the financial fees, because they've all been encouraged to apply for scholarship?
Yeah, we did a pretty big push during the signup window to individually reach out to families on a few different occasions from a few, few different people to be able to, you know, say, don't let finances be the reason.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think immigration status is a reason for some families not going, they're worried about their kids traveling, not knowing the status of, uh, immigration, um, stuff in our country. And, um, but others, other than that, there's a few students I think that just, maybe they're anxious about going, didn't wanna go, or, um, parents didn't want them to go. But that number, again, we thought it was, we're gonna get about maybe sixty, sixty-five percent of the class, but we got, you know, uh, more like eighty-five percent, so it's great.
And you have all of your grade teachers and some TAs going? Is the chaperones or who's, who's, how's that known?
Uh. A teacher or, a teacher or student from the grade that will probably stay behind to work with the, the twenty or so that don't go. Um, and then the rest of the chaperones are a combination of teachers and, um, parents.
Be nice maybe if, if somewhere you could get some local, not, not local, local, but local state, local officials to maybe come in and talk to the students and do some.
Prep work for what they're gonna say, yeah.
Prep work or something, yeah, and also while the, other students are away, so that they're getting, you know, some kind of.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's a great idea.
Experience. Um, that's great, thank you, I, that, that's, that's good to have the clarification, 'cause I wasn't really sure, um, all of the details of that, but.
Yeah.
That's a huge task to take that many kids.
I know.
Are you going?
I am.
Well done.
Yeah. I've gone on these trips in the past in other districts, and, uh, it's the planning really that's the hardest part. Once there, the, the kids rise to the occasion and they're on their best behavior, and, uh, it'll be great.
Right. Right. That's awesome.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, please.
I have a couple of questions.
For, for Peter?
For Peter, about this, yeah.
Okay, okay, sure.
Um, do you feel like you're.
Just on the agenda.
No.
No, no, you, it, it's occasioned in part by a parent and student outside or inside the Stop and Shop, good for them, you know, selling lifesavers for whatever you were willing to donate. And they had a temperature, a thermometer there
Mm-hmm.
that showed that they were at about thirty out of sixty thousand. Does that sound about right, and would you consider that to be on track for where you're gonna need to be?
Mm-hmm. It's about right, yeah.
Seemed like a scary number to me, too big undertaking, but.
Yeah, it is.
A lot of lifesavers.
It is. Well, yeah, I didn't take one, I left that for others.
Well worth it.
Yeah, you'll start to see again, tonight being the first, but, um, the, the, the community, you know, just reminds me of Robin Harvey always talking about how generous our community is, this is just another one of those occasions, you'll start to see each agenda, probably more and more people coming, uh, forward, listed on your donation list, um, with tremendous generosity, so I think we'll be fine.
We are so fortunate, it's not just the Washington trip, but now we're selling oranges and grapefruits, and I know the Chinese Club is selling tickets for their, their dinner coming up, um, for the Chinese New Year. I mean, our community is just amazing, and we are so fortunate for all of the support that they are willing to give to our students and our programs.
Girl Scout cookies.
Girl Scout cookies, I mean, it continues, it goes on and on, and we're very fortunate.
Yeah, for sure.
We really are, so, thank you very much.
Keep us updated.
Yes, absolutely. So may we vote to approve the donation to CPS from Union Lodge F and M for eighth grade Washington DC trip in the amount of six hundred and sixty-three dollars?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May we vote to approve donation to CPS from Bridgepoint Risk Management LLC for eighth grade Washington trip in the amount of one thousand dollars?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wow, do you wanna, can we have a vote to approve the donation to CPS from the Nantucket Project Academy for eighth grade Washington DC trip in the amount of two thousand dollars?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to approve the donation to CPS from Egan Maritime Institute for eighth grade.
Yeah, let's stay for this.
Great Harbor Yacht Club bus trips, October fifteenth and sixteenth, in the amount of two hundred and twelve dollars.
Move approval, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to approve the donation to NES from Nantucket Land Council for grants toward engineering is elementary kits for kindergarten in the amount of three hu, three thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to approve the donation to Nantucket Community School from Nantucket Education Trust Incorporated for summer boost in the amount of one thousand dollars?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to approve donation to Nantucket Community School from Poets Corner Press LLC for early childhood program in the amount of five hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to approve donation to Nantucket Community School from First Congregational Church Educational Outreach Board for Children Enrichment Program in the amount of five hundred dollars?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to approve donation to Nantucket Community School from Josh and Birdette Brown for the Learn to Swim program in the amount of one thousand dollars?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to approve the Nantucket High School cultural trip, Spanish and Mandarin Clubs Overnight Field Trip to Boston, Massachusetts on February eighth and ninth, two thousand nineteen?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to approve January eighth, two thousand eighteen meeting minutes?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to approve January fifteenth, two thousand eighteen? That's okay, public hearing meeting minutes?
Move approval, as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Transfers and invoices?
Move approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the superintendent's report.
I've given you a paper copy of the, um, school committee self-evaluation, and right before the meeting, I sent you an electronic copy
Yep.
as well, some people prefer to have the paper copy, and, um, we'll need to get you thinking about that and, um, submitting those to Logan at some point, and then she will collate that, and we'll make that a part of, uh, a future school committee meeting.
When should we have it?
I, I think it was on the, is it on the, coming up?
Logan, we usually try to have that ready sometime in February.
February fifth?
Yeah.
Yep.
February, January, March.
So we should try to have these back.
To our office.
February first?
I think so, that'd be great.
Does that sound reasonable? Well, if they're gonna try to coordinate it by our first meeting in February, that would seem to be.
All right.
Sure, that'd be great.
Great, thank you.
And then, um, some of you were able to go to FinCom, others had, um, another pressing engagement with the search committee. Um, it was about an hour, um, you've seen it here at the budget hearing, so it's the, it's essentially the same presentation with sometimes a few different questions. There didn't appear to be, um, a lot of questions by, um, the finance committee today. So, um, I will take that as, um, representative, they, they understood it and didn't have any, um, significant problems with anything that was submitted. There was a comment at the end, um, acknowledging how wide the spectrum is in the classroom that teachers have to teach, and, um, hoping that we continue to try to, um, address that either through staffing or other means. At least, that's the way that I interpreted.
Yeah, I think, I think her exact words were more along the lines of focusing on our students with challenges and math, and hope that we would be able to continue to do that.
Yep. Um, but it was, it was a good meeting, um, I, my understanding is that FinCom meets with Capcom tomorrow, and so we'll have a better idea of what actually is, is moving forward. Um, I'm hearing that they haven't figured out the, the way to fund the, um, the amount to set aside for buying properties, and so they may not approve that in Capcom, but they agree with the need to do that. They're just not sure what mechanism is the proper way to do that. So we'll see, um, and then I had mentioned at FinCom that Martin will be part of a webinar to learn a little bit more about, um, what's happening with chapter seventy funds and that formula, um, because that's changing, and that could have implications for, um, the budget as well.
They did not fall out of their chairs when you mentioned the possibility of having to build another school in a few years.
They did not, and, um, of course, that's always predicated on enrollment, but I think my point in that meeting really was the importance of having a design for, a master design for the complex here, rather than have a master design for the athletic, for simply athletics. Because if we build fields and, and put them in, and then later have to say, oops, we, we need to put a school there, that doesn't show the foresight that we need to have, so, um, we'll see.
It could also be called kicking the cans down the road.
Um, that's happened before, it's happened before, so, uh, that's all I have.
Well, thank you. Any subcommittee work to report on?
Um, a couple of things. The, uh, Behavior Health Group met January fifteenth. That's a collection of our principals from all four schools, social workers, and also representation from GCF and GOSNOG usually, and, um, Fairways. It was a great, uh, discussion, I think all schools, all four schools report that they feel that their social emotional programs and the substance abuse prevention programs that they have out threaded throughout this, the district, um, is doing a good job. They feel like they're, that they're adequately supported, and our students are getting the information and, and education that they feel is necessary. So I was comforted to hear that. Um, we really do have a detailed area, I mean, Eve Marie gave a very detailed, um, list of all of the programs in the different grades. Let's dig it, you, three. Um, but, um, but all, all four prin, it was, it was a soft one. Um, all four principals reported, um, in detail the programs that they have, and, and, and it was an area that the school committee had talked about. We had discussed whether we wanted to have a subcommittee in this area, and I'd asked if we could maybe use this, um, meeting in this subgroup already that's in existence to discuss, and, um, at this point, I think with the principal's support, that we're in, we're in a good position right now.
That's great to hear.
So, and I think with all of what the challenges that we see in our community and our young people, um, I'm hoping that we can help support them in an earlier age.
Mm. Thank you.
Um, other reports, NE Teen Nantucket Education Trust met also last week. Um, some of you may have received the year-end letter in support of an initiative that we are doing with the, um, high school guidance department, and that is taking sophomores off to look at sc, uh, colleges. We're hoping to get some students off island earlier, um, and we're going to plan to go to trade schools, vocational schools, uh, state schools, private schools. But we will be, uh, making this available for free to students and families, so that, um, hopefully parents will come along for the trip. I know Mike and I have already put our hand up that we'd like to be along there for, for the ride.
Mm.
But, um, the community was very supportive, um, in our efforts, and so I'm happy to see Nantucket Education Trust in the position to be able to really move forward on an initiative like this. And it was really Mike's idea of spearheading it, and John Rupio, who attends all of our meetings, our school committee meetings, really gently nudged us to, um, do a full, uh, year-end annual fund, and I'm really glad that we did, because I think we've, to date, raised around twenty-three thousand dollars.
Wow, that's impressive.
So, it's really.
Again, our community comes through for our students.
This has really resonated, we, and in fact, I just received another letter today from a gentleman who will be back on island in March and is asked to meet with us because he's interested in, in the initiative and would like to learn more.
Wow.
So I think it's really, it, it's sort of hit a note here for our kids, so.
Fantastic.
Right, again.
Thank you.
Uh, one other question, not, not a subcommittee report, but a, um, horizon. We, we had agreed that we would like the culinary team to come next week.
Mm-hmm.
I happen to know that, that person, the chef has not been asked yet, so I just wondered who would be the person?
Actually, I had a conversation with the chef.
Oh, did you?
So I'm surprised to hear, um.
Oh, was it today?
It, no.
Oh, okay.
But in, in any case, if you look on the horizon, it's on February fifth.
Mm-hmm. And they, and they're, they said yes.
And, um, he said yes, so, yeah.
Just, I just want to go on to not be able to.
So.
All right, so that's great.
Need to talk, need to talk.
We need to chat, yes.
Do we have any negotiations going on?
We do not.
Uh-uh.
We don't, do we?
No. All right, well, on that note, may I have a motion to adjourn?
No, thank you, Henry.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody, thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Tim.